Good evening and welcome. We're glad you're here tonight. It is April 11th, 2022. Would you rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. And first off, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda. There are no additions or deletions or changes to the agenda that you have seen. So the agenda as is presented.
Move to second.
A motion by Sachin, a second by Corey. All in favor of the motion approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. This evening, we have a lot of recognitions tonight. And this is the most favorite part of being a board member, is to be able to celebrate with our students. So tonight, we're going to kick off that celebration with the recognition of the National Youth Orchestra of the USA member selection. Kelvin Keesley is going to be representing Rosemont High School and introducing us to our fabulous student.
Good evening, Madam Chair Magnuson, Superintendent Krieger, esteemed directors of the board. My name is Kelvin Keesling and I am the Assistant Principal at Rosemont High School in charge of our school's visual and performing arts programming. It's my true pleasure tonight to present to you one of our RHS students, Isaiah Sheeran, a 10th grader and oboe player who has been named the only Minnesota high schooler and one of only four oboe players in the United States of America to be chosen a part of the 2022 National Youth Orchestra this coming summer. Since an early age, Isaiah had an interest in learning a musical instrument. His parents, who are here with us tonight, encouraged him greatly. He took to playing the recorder with great passion and soon decided that he needed to learn to play one of the hardest instruments available, the oboe. The oboe is a double-reeded instrument and it requires incredible skill and finesse in the embouchure, the mouth. Isaiah started taking oboe lessons from Dr. Carrie Vecchione in 4th grade and has been a standout musician, student, and performer since adopting the instrument. In fact, he now takes lessons from two notable teachers, Dr. Vecchione and Cassie Pilgrim, who is principal oboe for the St. Paul Chamber Orchestra. Isaiah joined the Greater Twin Cities Youth Symphony, Gitzys as we call it, program in middle school and quickly advanced to their top ensemble, the Symphony, which he will be dashing off to right after this recognition. In recent years, Isaiah has been featured for solos with our Rosemont High School Wind Ensemble and Marching Band under the direction of Leon Sieve, who's here tonight, Scott Palmer, Taylor Eliason, Bo Hoover, and Calvin Lepetsky. He won a featured solo spot with the Gitzys Symphony, has been a two-time finalist in the Young People's Symphonic Concert Association's Concerto Competition, and a two-time finalist in the Thursday Musical Young Artist Competition. For the past two years, Isaiah has participated with the National Youth Orchestra, Number Two Orchestra, which is an ensemble that is dedicated for younger musicians ages 14 through 17. This year, he became eligible to audition for a seat with the National Youth Orchestra. He got it. This honor comes with the opportunity to play at Carnegie Hall and go on a European tour representing the United States with the National Youth Orchestra this summer. He also, which was not part of this recognition, but we have to share it, he also last week received word that he was accepted as an early entrant into the Curtis Institute of Music in Philadelphia, one of the nation's premier music conservatories with an acceptance rate of 2%. He is now going to be starting his performance education next fall and be continuing his high school diploma while he attends college for the oboe. It is my true privilege and honor to recognize Isaiah Sheeran for his acceptance into the NIO and for his collegiate aspirations. Congrats.
I wish we could say that there was a concert coming up soon at Rosemont High School where you could see him. If not, and if you missed it at Marching Band, their marching band competition, to stand and sit in the stands at Rosemont High School and watch an oboe player be the featured musical instrument on a marching band, quite amazing, amazing. Congratulations, Isaac. We'll miss you next year, but all the best. Next on our recognitions this evening is the 2022 Metro ECU Twin Cities Regional Spelling Bee runner-up. And we're going to have Dan Willharbor and Teresa Beck introduce our students. Our student.
Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. Hello, I'm Dan Willharbor, principal at Scott Highlands Middle School. And I'm here tonight because words like frau-frau, do-decahedron, laterigrade, hamadryad are hard to say and really, really hard to spell. Unless you are Isabelle Casique, she makes it look easy. To tell you more about Isabelle, here's one of our teachers and our gifted and talented program coordinator, Teresa Bach.
Thank you, Mr. Willharbor. Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. It is an honor to present Isabelle Casique to you as the second-place finisher of the Metro ECSU Twin Cities Regional Spelling Bee. This is an annual competition which brings the top 50 spellers in our region to compete and then determine the Twin Cities Regional Spelling Bee champion. This champion will represent the region at the Scripps National Spelling Bee later this spring in May. Isabelle's second-place finish is an impressive accomplishment years in the making. Isabelle's journey to the Twin Cities Regional Bee started way back in 4th grade when she and her mom would study her spelling list words diligently. Isabelle remembers being at a father-daughter's dance and when she wasn't performing onstage, she and her mom would sneak in the corner and take out the spelling list and practice those words. The practice paid off. She represented her school as a 4th grade student in the Texas Regional Spelling Bee. Isabelle's dedication helped pave the path to her successful spelling as a middle school student at Scott Highlands. She advanced into the classroom bees, the grade-level bees, the all-school spelling bee. Each year, she was at Scott Highlands, all three years. Finally, this year, she was crowned our champion and qualified again for this regional spelling bee. Isabelle's dedication as a speller is just the beginning of all the other academic success that she has had at Scott Highlands. She is also a key member of our junior math leagues team, our math counts competition team, and she is a finalist in the National Council Teachers of English's Promising Young Writers Program. Clearly, the Scott Highlands community is proud to introduce Isabelle to our district community so that we're all able to celebrate Isabelle's dedication and devotion to her academic performance. We present to you Isabelle Casique, second-place finisher in the Metro ECSU Twin Cities Regional Spelling Bee.
Next up in recognitions tonight is the 2021-22 Class AA Minnesota Association of Dance Teams Coach of the Year. We have Matt Percival from Eastview High School to introduce our dance team and our Dance Coach of the Year.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the board. I'm Eastview Athletic Director Matt Percival. First and foremost, I want to pass along my congratulations to all the honorees this evening and a big thanks to the board for taking the time to recognize all the amazing accomplishments in academics, arts, and athletics. We have so much to celebrate and be proud of in District 196. I'm here tonight to introduce the Minnesota Association of Dance Team State Coach of the Year for 2022, Jenny Raish. In just a few moments, Coach Raish will be at the microphone introducing the back-to-back-to-back double state champions in High Kick and Jazz. These will be the 19th and 20th state championship Lightning Dance Teams have won during her 20 years as the head dance team coach at Eastview High School. Terms like saying someone is the best ever are often debated in the sports world. But in the sport of dance team in the state of Minnesota, the numbers speak for themselves. She is truly the best ever. In her 20 years, the Lightning Dance Team has won 20 straight conference championships, 35 section championships, qualified for the state finals in both Kick and Jazz in all 20 years, 20 state championships, four state Coach of the Year awards, a member of the Coaches Association Hall of Fame, recipient of the 2022 National Women in Sports State Breaking Barriers Award, and a finalist for this year's National Coach of the Year Award to be announced in May. I think she's the favorite. In addition to all of these accolades, she also co-founded Miss Dance Team Minnesota in her very first year as a coach to give high school dancers the opportunity to represent their schools as individuals and be showcased and recognized across the state and at the national level for their incredible talents. She truly has helped put Minnesota High School Dance Team on the map. As recently as just a week or two ago, Team Minnesota, made up of high school dancers from the Miss Dance Team competition and also coached by Coach Raish, brought home yet another national championship from their competition in California. Yet, none of these stats or accomplishments is what really makes Jenny Raish a Coach of the Year. When we talk as athletic directors about hiring transformational coaches, we are talking about people like Coach Raish, coaches who each and every day use their platform to make an incredible impact on each athlete that she works with, not just as dancers, but as people. When people often ask me, what sets the Eastview Dance Team apart? They're often surprised by my answer. They expect me to say things like demanding practices, incredible technique, amazing choreography, all of which are true statements. But what really sets this team apart is Coach Raish's commitment to growing better people by instilling lifelong core values in each and every one of them each and every day. She spends as much time on developing the character of each athlete as she does on their dance skills. She's developed a culture that is about far more than winning. The number of alumni who return back to the program to watch them meet, help volunteer at an event, or in the cases of many, have actually joined the coaching staff over the years is pretty awesome to see. Each current team member or alumni would tell you, could tell you many stories about the impact Coach has had on their lives. Those stories transcend the sport of dance. She's there for kids in their toughest of times and walks alongside them no matter what the challenge is. And she's also there to celebrate each team member for who they are as a person, not just their accomplishments as a dancer. To me, that is what makes her the best. Of course, the last thing she wants is for me or anyone else to be standing at this microphone talking about her. So I will wrap this up and let her introduce the team. We've been beyond blessed to have the best dance team coach in the state at Eastview High School the last 20 years, especially at a time when coaching turnover is at an extremely rapid rate. As she leaves Eastview this year to pursue her own personal and professional opportunities that have always taken a backseat to her coaching dance, we could not be more grateful for the impact she's had on hundreds of kids over the last 20 years. Her legacy is truly immeasurable. So before she gets the chance now to introduce the team, I want to make sure, take a moment to introduce to you the 2022 Minnesota State Dance Team Coach of the Year, Jenny Raish.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. I am honored to be here tonight to present this outstanding group of student athletes that I have had the opportunity to coach this year. I have truly treasured my role as the head coach of the Lightning Dance Team at Eastview High School for the past 20 years. And as Matt said, I will be graduating, not retiring, graduating, with the class of 2022. Before I introduce each of them, I do want to take a quick opportunity to publicly thank a few leaders in both the Eastview and District 196 community who have been instrumental to my success as a coach and to our success as a team. I interviewed with Dr. Dick Dewey back in the spring of 2002 and within 15 minutes of that interview, he used his magic, if you know him, you know he has it, to make me fall in love with Eastview High School. Randy Peterson, Jane Behrens, Mark Parr, they were always leaders that I looked up to for their diligence and their professionalism. And I will always remember their unwavering support for me. Bruce Miller was the A.D. when I first started at Eastview High School and he has now continued to lead our school in such a thoughtful and determined way, especially through the last few years. Finally, and most importantly, the most incredible and consistent leadership, guidance, and friendship has always come from my A.D., Matt Percival. He has allowed me to grow in so many ways that I never thought possible. And Matt, I will always be grateful for you. So thank you to all of those people who had a huge impact on me. But now onto the most important thing. Led by a group of 11 graduating seniors this year, the Lightning Dance Team ended the 2021-2022 season undefeated for the third year in a row. Placing first all 20 times they competed this season, they earned the title of South suburban conference champions in both High Kick and Jazz, the Section 1 AAA Champions in both High Kick and Jazz, and they are again the state-class AAA state champions in both High Kick and Jazz. This team also received the highest academic all-state award with a cumulative GPA of 3.764. Five of our seniors also received all-state academic honors with GPAs of over 3.85. Right now, seven of our seniors plan to continue their dance team careers in college, five of them committing to dancing at the D1 level. I am so proud to coach all of these young women and would like to introduce them now. A quick note that many of our dancers are not able to be here because many of them have their first track meet today or their first softball game and some of them are at dance studio rehearsals. So I'm going to read all of their names. But dancers, if you are here, step forward and raise a hand. First up, Genevieve Anderson, Peyton Arntz, Mia Barnes, Ava Bellows, Meadow Burke, Bennett Espindabannick, Mia Foster, Addison Hedrick, Amelia Capel, Megan Knutson, Zoe Kritsis, Paige Lorsung, Ariana Navarro, Anna Nguyen, Katie Percival, Ava Sartori, Alexa Shelkey, Alexis Stolpa, Mylana Tong, Lola Van Dyke. And our dancers who were not able to be here were Elizabeth Dobis, Tori Freeman, Elizabeth Hallam, Ainsley Hickok, Julia Kinch, Nicolette Kruger, Danielle Nelson, Maya Schmidt, Deirdre Turk, Charlie Whalen, Abby Williams, Ava Wood, and Athena Zahn. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here to congratulate this awesome group of students. Thank you.
Oh, congratulations, Coach. And if you have not seen those women perform, you have missed something. They are incredibly awesome. And the talent and the dedication that it takes to do that is unbelievable. So congratulations, Coach. We will miss you. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the 2022 Minnesota State High School League Boys Class AA Swim and Dive Champions. We've got Chris Morgan presenting from Eagan High School.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson and the board, Superintendent Krieger. I am Chris Morgan. I'm the head coach of the Eagan Boys Swim and Dive swim team. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce you to Mr. Jackson Keller over here. He's a three-time state champion and I'll get into some more stats later. But I wanted to just comment a little bit on his character. He's an academic, All-American, as well as an athletic, All-American. And we're very proud of who we are at Eagan and it's kind of a brotherhood or a family away from family, if you will. And when he came on as a freshman, he sort of knew that at the molecular level and his work ethic and humility has made him one of our best teammates as well as one of the best athletes I've ever had the pleasure to work with. So I just, I appreciate him as a man as well as an athlete. He was second place this year in the 200 free. He won the Hunter Fly. He and several of his teammates, including his brother, earned an all-state finish with the 400 freestyle relay. He also won state titles in the 200 and the 500 free as a 10th grader and he did not swim last year in COVID's modified season. He's competed against the best at the conference, region, and state and national levels. I have been truly fortunate to coach some very talented young men here at Eagan over the last 15 years. Jackson is arguably the best yet. As he wrapped up his senior season, it's worthy to know that he does indeed have three state titles, seven all-state finishes, he has five section titles, he has three section records, one in the 200 free that was held by a former Olympian for over 20 years, Mr. Tom Melchow. He's been section swimmer of the year twice. And as I said, he's both All-American as an athlete and All-American as an academic. I want to recognize Jackson's parents, Jennifer and Paul, if they're here tonight. The apple does not fall far from the tree. Great people make great people. We're all very proud of Jackson. We'd like to thank the board for supporting us and giving us value and allowing us the opportunity to relive these events. I also want us to thank Sandy Seder for setting the example of excellence to all of us coaches and making us all feel very valued. I just want to thank the board again for that opportunity and thank you, Sandy, and thank you to the Jackson family. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Jackson. It'll be fun to watch where you go from here. Next on the agenda for recognitions this evening is the 2022 Minnesota State High School League Boys Double-A Swim Class Swim and Dive Champion from Rosemont High School. And Jacob Kenna will introduce our champion.
Thank you, Chairperson Magnuson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger. My name is Jake Kenna. I'm the head coach of the Rosemont High School Swim and Dive Programs here. I'm pleased to be here to honor Evan Kinseth and Lucas Gertin, two swimmers, two athletes in our program here. First, I'd like to introduce Evan Kinseth. I've had the privilege of coaching Evan for the past five years. He came to us as an 8th grader and he's been a varsity swimmer for us for all five years. I'll start off with his accomplishments in the pool first. He has been all-conference for us for four years, a state qualifier for us for three years. He has earned all-state honors for us for three years. He's been state runner-up in the 500-yard freestyle twice, earning All-American honors in both of those times. He holds three of our team records plus multiple pool records across the state. And on top of all that, he is committed to swim Division I and continue his education athletic career at the University of Miami, Ohio. But most importantly, what I do want to talk about is what Evan has done for our program. Something we talk about within our program is culture. Evan has continued our success in that area. One thing that we know that Evan has is a drive and a work ethic. And what he does day in and day out to accomplish his goals has set a standard of culture and a standard of work and a standard that we will have to continue because of him. And we are proud of him for that. And we couldn't be happier with the way our program looks for the future because of that. We are honored to have him here for the last five years and we can't thank him enough. We can't thank his parents enough, Jen and Carl, for supporting him and our program and what they have done. So again, thank you all. Evan, thank you for everything you've brought to our program. Next, I'd like to introduce Lucas Gertin. We talk about first, and with Lucas, kind of talk about the opposite here. As a freshman, Lucas has been with us for three years. He came to us as a 7th grader. And so we talk about Evan and how the future looks right there as we're looking right into the future of our program. Freshman, this freshman year, Lucas went on and went undefeated in every dive that he, in every meet, in every competition that he had this season, all the way up in the section meet where he broke our team record in front of his dive coach, Dan Monahan, and two-time state champion and former record holder. He went on to the state meet to win the state championship in the 11 dive, one-meter diving, which came down to his very last dive and where he won his state championship in that event. But again, the most important thing about Lucas is he does not make excuses or take shortcuts. He works beyond what most athletes would expect for themselves and even beyond what his coaches expect of him. He pushes himself to be the best, which is where it landed him. This season, he broke, again, this season, he had so many accomplishments and we know the future looks bright with Lucas in our program and the culture that we have and the continued success that we're going to have with this. So we're again excited for all the success he's going to have but excited to what he's going to bring to our program. So again, thank you, board members. Thank you to our administration, Mike Manning, Pete Robach, Calvin Keesling, who are here tonight as well. A big thank you to Henry and Teresa Gertin, who have again supported him and got him out for our program. Thank you, everyone.
Lucas, we'll see you again next year. And Evan, have a great next following year. Congratulations. Next up in our 2022 Minnesota State High School League Girls Wrestling Tournament, we'll call up Kurt Habek from Eastview High School and he's going to introduce to us two champions.
Congratulations to all those being recognized tonight and including Grace who will follow me. So, so impressive. My name is Kurt Habek. I'm an administrator at Eastview High School and have been the head wrestling coach for the past 25 years. Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger, it is my pleasure to be here to recognize Riley Myers and Elsie Olson for their accomplishments as student athletes on behalf of Eastview High School's administration, faculty, and student body. Eastview Wrestling 2022. Our team's motto was embrace the corner and part of that being defined as take on what is holding us back, perform, and become the best version of ourselves. We had a very successful season with 18 wins, academic gold recognition for the 22nd year in a row with a 3.72 team GPA, and qualifying six wrestlers to the state tournament with three state place winners. We had 47 wrestlers successfully complete the season, 45 boys and the two girls being recognized tonight. Girls wrestling has been a sport for boys with girls participating if they wish. In May 2021, the Minnesota State High School League Board approved a girls-only section and state wrestling tournament. Minnesota became the 32nd state to offer a state high school league tournament, finally. 22,000 girls are currently participating nationwide and it's been increasing at about a rate of 25% per year. Elsie and Riley are members of the Eastview Wrestling Team. They are teammates. They want to be treated like everyone else on the team. And it's also important that we honor the fact that they are girls. With girls wrestling added to the Minnesota State High School League tournaments, we hope to have an additional 45-plus girls on our team in a few years, including and just like Elsie and Riley. Each year comes sections, we write a section poem in preparation for the tournaments. Wrestlers are given a poster with action picture of themselves, an inspirational message from each of their teammates, and a motivating name included in the poem. Part of the poem goes, "We are constantly moving forward, not back. Opponents will be blinded by the blue, white, and black." Wrestling at 185 pounds, elusive Elsie. She likes to have fun. She likes to joke with the coaches, always challenging the boys. Some of her most memorable moments, the friends that she made this season and the overnight trip to the Bi-State Tournament in Wisconsin. Her favorite move, snap down and score, although the coaches think that the cradle she used to pin her opponent to qualify state should be her favorite. Her future goals, get stronger, invite more girls to participate. Elsie also participates in track. Wrestling at 138 pounds, relentless Riley. She can appear to be serious, humble, very competitive. We had to keep her relaxed and smile and goof around because she was performing in front of 10,000 people at the Excel Center. Her most memorable moments, winning state, beating an 8th grader brother on the team. I've added that myself because I could tell she enjoyed doing that. Her best and favorite move, snap down and score, and she did that a lot. Her future goals, to be a captain, continue to improve, and defend her state title. Riley also participates in lacrosse. Their parents are here, Kristy and Lauren Myers and Amy Pressler and Tony Olson. Thank you for being here. I present to you the inaugural 2022 Minnesota Girls State Wrestling Championships, Standing Tall, All-State earning third-place honors in Academic Silver Recognition, freshman Elsie Olson, All-State Champion and Academic Gold Recognition, sophomore Riley Myers. Thank you.
Little-known fact, Elsie's grandma couldn't be here tonight. Elsie's grandma was a longtime district elementary teacher, and I know she is so proud of her granddaughter. So congratulations, Elsie. Ladies, congratulations. You truly are amazing and will be legends forever. I just said your grandma is going to miss you. She was feeling bad she couldn't come tonight. She's a lovely lady. So congratulations, ladies. Our last recognition this evening is the 2022 Minnesota State High School League Girls Wrestling Tournament from Apple Valley High School, and we'll call up Tyler Zimmerman.
All right. Thank you and good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Chairperson Magnuson, Superintendent Krieger, and the rest of the School Board members for having us here tonight. My name is Tyler Zimmerman. I teach honors and AP Biology, and I'm also one of the wrestling coaches at Apple Valley High School. This season was filled with several highlights. We once again made it to Team State, our 37th appearance in the school's 46-year history. We qualified nine wrestlers, including two women, for the first year of sanctioned girls wrestling. We continue to earn the Gold Academic Award for the ninth consecutive year of a team GPA of 3.75. But tonight, I am proud to recognize the hard work of one of our student athletes, Grace Salagbo. Grace's parents, Kojo and Anna, are here tonight, and I want to say thank you for your continued support. Grace Salagbo is a champion. As one of her coaches, I was able to see the hard work she put in every day, both on the mat and in school. In her very first year of wrestling, she set a high standard for herself and for her teammates. She would stay after practice to get extra time, learning how to get better at all aspects of the sport. As a sophomore, she maintains a 3.8 GPA and has enrolled in several AP and honors classes, including biology. She is coachable, in that even though she would learn new techniques very fast, she would listen to her coaches and focus on the things she had mastered when it came time for competition. Like all champions, she struggled at times with her confidence and dealt with injuries, but never made excuses and persevered. Often, I had to tell her to take a break and rest, and once I had to send her home because she wanted to practice even though she was clearly sick. She knew to win at the highest level, it would take all she could give and possibly more. All of the Apple Valley coaches, wrestlers, and community are so very proud of you. Please join me in a round of applause for Apple Valley's newest member to the rich tradition of state champions to call themselves Eagles, Grace Salagbo, everyone.
Oh, congratulations, Grace, and thank you for coming tonight. We'll see you again next year. Congratulations. We've come to the end of our recognitions, and we couldn't be more happy than to celebrate our students' success and thank the parents and teachers and coaches who have helped those students get their successes. So congratulations and thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is the superintendent's recognitions of students and staff.
Okay, actually, the accolades just don't end. We have the most amazing kids, so I have some more to congratulate. Congratulations to the Rosemont High School Girls Basketball Team on winning the Constellation Championship in this year's Class 4A State Tournament. Rosemont was defeated by one point in their quarterfinal game and came back to win the next two games to win the Constellation Championship. Congratulations to the Eastview High School Boys Basketball Team on qualifying for the Class 4A State Tournament where they defeated Eden Prairie in the quarterfinal round and were defeated by eventual state champion Park Center in the semifinals. Congratulations to the 21 District 196 High School students selected to receive a 2022 Minnesota Aspirations for Women in Computing Award. The annual award celebrates the efforts of young high school women in their pursuit of technology education and career opportunities. Congratulations to the Dakota Hawks adapted floor hockey teams on winning the state championship in the PI Division, and to the Hawks CI team on winning the Constellation Championship in their state tournament in March. And we will recognize the PI team at our May 9th School Board meeting. And congratulations to mock trial teams from Apple Valley and Eastview High Schools on qualifying for and competing in this year's state tournament in March. Such amazing students that we have, and we also have amazing staff. And so later in this meeting, the School Board will be asked to approve resolutions recognizing the great work of our outstanding teachers and school nurses, the week of May 2nd to the 6th. So right now, I'd like to ask any of our nurses that are in the audience to please stand up so that we can recognize you. And do we have any teachers here? We had a few, but they may have left with their kids. So we'll do an honorary applause for our teachers. Oh, there we go. That's right. You do a fine job representing all of your peers, Jim. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And so next, for our amazing teacher that is here to be recognized, I would like to invite to the podium Apple Valley High School STEM Program Coordinator, Jim Lynch, who will introduce us to a special longtime volunteer for the robotics program at Apple Valley High School. Later this evening, the School Board will be asked to approve a resolution recognizing the many volunteers who give countless hours to our students, schools, and the programs that serve our students. Thank you for being here, Jim, and please introduce our guest.
Thank you for having me and thank you for taking the moment to do this. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Joey Lake. Just a little bit about him as a representation of the many, many robotics volunteers in our district. I'll get you, I'm a STEM guy, so I'm going to have to hit you with some numbers. But first off with Joey, he was a founding member of the AVHS First Robotics Team, so he is an alumnus as well as a volunteer. He was actually the, in the first team, 2009 graduate. He was inspired, I believe, to pursue a degree at Milwaukee School of Engineering and is now a manufacturing, at Zeiss Manufacturing as a technical support specialist. And on to his volunteer work, extremely dedicated. As his parents are here, we're very grateful to have Joey at Apple Valley High School and thank you for being here. He's been the lead mentor at Apple Valley High School for 11 years, and here comes some numbers. Each year, having lived in his role, I can voucher him, he has put in about 600 hours in those 11 years. So if you do the math, that's 6,600 hours of dedicated time to our students at Apple Valley High School over those 11 years. And it just doesn't end there. He's donated his individual, his own equipment, 3D printers, CNC machines, things like that over the years to help the students. And then the impact, over half of the students that Joey has served over those 11 years have gone into STEM career fields, which I think is really, really incredible. So before I move on to a broader district perspective, I'd like to just give you a hand and thank you. Very, very quickly, it just doesn't stop with Joey, and he knows this because he's part of a much bigger First Robotics Program. There are 20 First Lego League teams for the elementary-age kids. That's about 40 adults involved. That's 4,000 hours, about 100 hours per team at that level. Then you go on to First Tech Challenge Team, which is usually middle school, sometimes younger high school students, sometimes all the way through high school, as one of your camera people knows, who used to be an iron maiden at Apple Valley High School. There is about 11 teams, a couple of coaches per team, which is really a low estimate. So about 22, about 150 hours at that level, that's 3,300 hours of volunteer time, serving over 100 students. And then you get to the bigger teams that build the bigger robots, there's four teams, all four of our comprehensive high schools have them, on average, and this is low, I know, for some teams, this is about seven mentors. So a total of about 24 mentors across the high school, 700 hours per team. That's 16,000 hours if you do the math, actually over 16,000 hours. And then that, it just doesn't stop there. There's people like myself and others that aren't coaching teams but volunteer to make all these events happen. If you've been to a competition, I know some of you have very recently, it takes many, many volunteers to make that happen, judges, referees. On average, we did, we actually did some research, there are 25 adults from this district that volunteer in that role, that's another 900 hours. So on a district total, just to finish this off, over 100 adults serving across the district, if you add all of that up, that's over 20,000 hours of volunteer work a year, represented by the work that Joey has done at Apple Valley High School. Over 400 students served, and that doesn't count, that doesn't even add in the amount of outreach work. As you know, if you came to our robotics tournament, we had over 135 Echo Park third graders come, and that's really heavily pushed in that first program. So there's many, many, many more students impacted by the time that these people have put in. So I guess for all the first people represented by Joey, I'd like to give them all a hand. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Joey, we'd just like to thank you too. You kind of set the bar for how this could look and how mentorship could work. We went down, Superintendent Krieger and I went down to the robotics thing. I was blown away. I was blown away by what they had built. I was blown away by students telling us what they had built and how it does it. You have to, this was going to shoot the ball into this level, and this was going to shoot the ball higher, and then the robot was going to climb, and it was totally amazing. I'm hooked, I'm going to volunteer next year. It was totally amazing and totally fun to watch those students be so involved, so engaged, and what they had built was tremendous. Not only, Jim, you talked about volunteer hours, but it's cash donations too that make, and cash donations and equipment donations that make those programs run too. So we have a lot of people that we can thank for the robotics teams and the legacy that you have started, Jay. So congratulations. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to special communication requests. We have one special communication request this evening. If you would like to speak at open, during our special communication request, you must submit a form at least five days in advance of the meeting. 10 speakers receive up to four minutes to share their comments. If there are more than 10 requests, a lottery is conducted to determine those 10 speakers. Speakers may not allow their time to others, and we use a timer for public comment and will remind speakers when they have 30 minutes, 30 seconds remaining. We expect speakers to finish their remarks, and when their time expires, they will be done and the microphones will be shut off. Speakers are also reminded not to share complaints about specific employees or make inappropriate comments. Opinions shared during the public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily represent the views of the School Board or the district or maybe perhaps yourself. The audience is expected to be calm, civil, and not disrupt. Speakers from being heard. Speakers, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your connection to the school district. And our speaker this evening is David Bester.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent and Chairperson and Board members for letting me speak. I just wanted to share that, as you know, we're in a time of turmoil, our nation is. People have turmoil in their hearts for lots of reasons, but most are so busy they can't identify the cause. They know also that they are being deceived and manipulated, but don't think there is anything they can do about it. It is like we can't see the forest for the trees. So we turn to someone for wisdom who we think we can trust, an organization with people who believe, that we believe have our best interests in mind, and they're organized and qualified and passionate, like people in the schools or in government. But true wisdom doesn't come by how much education you have or how charismatic you are, nor by the statistics that can be manipulated, as we're beginning to see through the pandemic and the overaction that came from it. But just like fool's gold, the fool doesn't know what real gold looks like, so he falls for the counterfeit. Some things you know are right just because it's right, and has worked over the years. Communities have prospered through strong, God-designed, nuclear families. America prospered even before the public school system because of its commitment to God, the rights of people, limited government, individual rewards through individual effort, no matter the color of the skin or religion, and love that put the good of the community above people's individual comfort and ambition. There have been a few bad apples over time, and now it seems they are spoiling the bunch. My ask to you is that you each search your hearts and make decisions based on what is right and wrong and not what the so-called progressive experts have to say, even though they may say so loudly and often. Some of you realize that the majority of parents you represent don't want their kids divided by race through CRT principles, or whatever you're calling it nowadays, or taught about sex in elementary school, or encouraged to change the gender that God created them with. Some of you will understand that the parents you represent love their children and are responsible for and in charge of their children and not the schools and not the government. And some of you won't, and you won't care. I would also ask for more transparency in what's being taught in the classrooms, by allowing parents and concerned tax-paying citizens observe classes in action. The Lord promised that the tin pigs would be pulled up and the deception, manipulation, and evil would be exposed. It is starting to happen now across the nation. I believe it is because people are turning their hearts to God and crying out for justice. Godly parents are the ones being oppressed. God resists the proud and gives grace to the humble. I'm just asking you guys to choose who you'll stand with, either the good and godly parents or the so-called progressive experts. Good citizens will stand for justice, no matter the color of skin or religion, and good citizens are willing to listen to all sides. You will find that good citizens are very forgiving if you admit a mistake and turn away from it, whether you're a school board member, a teacher, or administrator. But if you decide to stand with the progressive experts, you will find that you're in a battle against protective parents and even maybe God Himself. The parents are starting to wake up to what's happening to their kids. And don't be deceived, God is not mocked. What you sow, you also reap. Thank you.
We'll move on to the items of the consent agenda this evening. Under the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the March 14th, 2022, regular School Board meeting. We have the minutes of the March 28th, 2022, special School Board meeting. We have gifts, we have grants, we have the treasurer's report for February 2022, we have summary of claims for February 2022, we have schedule of investments for February 2022, we have revenue and expenditure reports for February 2022, we have personnel exhibit, we have termination and non-renewal of probationary teachers, we have pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time employees, we have a student-teacher agreement, we have HRA and VIBA trustee, we have First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental if I take a deep breath and say it slow, I'll get it all out. First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agency or agreement, there you go. We have the 2022-23 tuition rates for international students, for international students. We have agreement with the Dakota County for fiber strand use. We have supplement for pupil transportation services. We have contracted bus transportation. We have Red Pine Elementary School 2022 building automated systems upgrade. We have the Dakota Ridge School 2022 building automated system upgrade, and we have the District Service Center 2022 building automated systems upgrade. Is there any items on the consent agenda we would like to pull? And please don't pull the First Amendment because I don't want to have to read that Seeing any questions from anybody? I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion by Art, a second by Corey. All in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you, that passes on a unanimous vote. We have no reports this evening, and we have items under old business, one item under old business, and that's the 2022 capital expenditure budget. We'll call up Christopher Anyango Rabshaw to walk us through the capital expense report.
Thank you, Chairman Magnuson. Good evening, and Superintendent Krieger, members of the board and the public. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and visit this item with us this evening. During our February School Board meeting, we discussed at a high level the two capital items that are being presented today. So operating capital and our long-term facilities maintenance revenue. It is an action item tonight, so I'm going to slow it down a little bit and kind of walk us through what it is that we've included. to slow it down a little bit and kind of walk us through what it is that we've included. Included in the packet today is our budget book. So this is our capital budget book for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I appreciate the help and assistance that administrators across the district have put into making sure that the document that's presented, the data that's included in here is accurate. It does reflect the values that we're presenting as far as maintaining our buildings, maintaining the furniture equipment that our students are using. And I will give a special kudos to Danny, who helps put the book together. He makes me look good, and so does a lot of people around here. So we have two items, operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance. There are similarities between these two programs. Both of them have an aid and levy component. The split between the aid levy that's coming into these programs is about thirty-five, sixty-five percent between each. They do also, we are spending these funds to maintain buildings. The divergence between the operating and the long-term facilities maintenance revenue you can see is mostly on the operating capital. It is used for new things. So when we are purchasing furniture, we're making additions to infrastructure, we use operating capital. Long-term facilities maintenance is used for maintaining current items. So if a door breaks and we want to replace it, we would use long-term facilities maintenance. If there was no door and we wanted to put a new door in a hallway, operating capital would help to pay for that. So LTFM, long-term facilities maintenance, helps with the hard space, the grounds, the facilities, building envelope, and those kinds of things, while operating capital has to do with our furniture, fixtures, and equipment. In page eleven of this budget book, we detail out the various revenue and expenditure components. Aid for operating capital is estimated at four point seven million, levy eight point one million. We're anticipating expenditures for operating capital at thirteen point eight million, with the reserves at the end of the fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three of one point six million. Long-term facilities maintenance, we're anticipating aid of four million, revenues from levy seven point seven million, and expenditures across all the items at twelve point oh million dollars. The fund balance anticipated at the end of the twenty-three fiscal year for LTFM is a hundred thousand dollars. What we've detailed out in this book is all the items individually by building and then district-wide that we will be making investments on. I'm happy to address any questions that the board or the public may have on this.
This is an action item this evening, so before we move ahead in questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
The move?
Second?
A motion by Joel, a second by Sutchen. Are there questions or comments from the audience? This is available online.
Yes, it is.
And it's about eighty pages if you want to look through a great breakdown of our, of our facilities or of our budgets. With that, are there questions or comments from board members? Seeing none? Good job. We've got a motion and a second to approve the capital expenditure budget for the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That passes on a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an item of new business this evening, and that's the overview of the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. We'll call up Jill, and she can introduce everybody else who's with her. Jill Coyle is the attorney for the school district.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am joined tonight. Often I'm here on my own, but tonight I have the good fortune to be joined by two of my colleagues, Stephanie Ochaki, the district's student support and SEL coordinator, and Violetta Hernandez Espinoza, the district's coordinator of equity and inclusion. Welcome, Stephanie and Violetta. So our goal today, it's really two-part. I'm going to be going through the annual changes to the overview of student rights and responsibilities as it's been proposed to you tonight as new business. And then once I've done that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Stephanie and Violetta, and they can walk you through an update on a committee process that we have going on right now to do a deep dive into our school student discipline, student behavior regulation. We're taking a hard look at that to make sure that it continues to be written in a way that is ensuring safety for all of our students and equity for all of our students. So they'll take you through that tonight. But the first matter at hand is, of course, our annual review of the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. As you know, and I brought our current one with me today, it's the green book that many of you have seen before. Maybe you have it at home. I know I keep it at my desk and refer to it on nearly a daily basis. You chuckle, but that's real. I really do refer to it on a daily basis. What this book does for our families and our school communities is to summarize a variety of important policies and regulations for our students. Perhaps most notably, it's our student behavior regulation, and that takes up the bulk of the overview of student rights and responsibilities. But we also summarize a variety of other important policies, including policies on student data privacy, harassment and discrimination, student fees and fines, student attendance, and many, many more. We're required by law to have these policies and to update them to better reflect changing law as well as the needs of the district. Okay. So the process, just a brief refresher on the process that we follow to get each year's changes, we start with our various school communities, and we ask each of our schools to provide us with input about needed changes to the overview of student rights and responsibilities. Once we receive that input from our schools, we will distill it into a series of recommendations that we bring to the cabinet, to our principal meetings. Ultimately, we'll send it to our board policy review committee, and then onwards to the school board in the form of formal recommendations. I will say that this year there are not as many changes as we've seen in the past. I believe we're in more of a transitional year this year. In recent years, we've had a number of significant changes, and I think the lull this year is perhaps in anticipation of having some recommendations from the committee process for the following year's student rights and responsibilities. With that said, though, I would like to itemize this year's most significant changes, although they are slight in comparison to what we've seen in the past. First, a change is proposed to limit the military's access to student information to students in grades eleven and twelve. Parents and eligible students continue to have the right to opt out of this, and the change is intended to conform with the law and practice. In practice, the military doesn't seek information except on our eleventh and twelfth grade students, and so we're conforming the language to that practice. Second, we've got a change to the section on corporal punishment, physical restraint, and reasonable force. That section has been relocated and revised to align with statutory language. Next, we've added a proposed statement to the student attendance section to match recent changes in the law regarding the accommodation of religious observances. There was a change in the statute that requires us to have that language in our handbook, and that's why it's been added. In addition, portions of the section previously titled "Student Behavior and Discipline" were either relocated or deleted to remove redundancy. We added a reference to the Student Fees and Fines Regulation. And then, within the Behaviors and Responses grid, we made the following changes. In category twenty-eight, interference, disruption, or obstruction, we've proposed revised language concerning student behavior that compromises safety. In category thirty-eight, sexual violence, we've proposed an update to reference the district's Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Process. And then finally, in category thirty-nine, technology-related, we've updated the language to apply more fully to our elementary school students. This is a review item tonight. I'll be back with it as old business in May. But at this time, I'll hand the presentation over to Stephanie Ochaki and Violetta Hernandez Espinoza to comment a bit about the committee process that we have underway. And then when that portion of the presentation is over, all three of us will be available to answer questions you have about either topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take it off now. Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger, and honorable public. For the record, my name is Violetta Hernandez Espinoza, and I'm coordinator of equity and inclusion for the district. I haven't had the chance to meet some of you. Great to be here with you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to come at this evening. As Jill mentioned, the school district is required to review its district discipline policy every year per Minnesota statute, chapter one twenty-one A. This statute directs districts to adopt written policies and rules to carry out the Pupil Fair Dismissal Act and establish uniform criteria for recommending dismissal. The policies must include written rules of conduct for students, minimum consequences for violations of the rules, and groups and procedures for a removal of a student from class. This law also emphasizes the importance of proactive measures, such as early detection, to address and prevent the recurrence of inappropriate behavior. In June of twenty eighteen, the district began a partnership with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights to identify strategies aimed at better addressing the disparities and suspensions for students of color and students receiving special education services. As this collaborative work was set to sunset last year in September, district leadership was proactively identifying additional ways to improve our practices relating to student behavior requiring a referral. To that end, a review committee was created to provide additional outreach and input to supplement the annual review process that Jill referred to today. The charge of the five oh three point three AR Review Committee is to examine the district's student behavior expectations and responses administrative regulation and make recommendations for improvement. Through our committee process, we are gathering information to ensure our five oh three point three AR regulation reflects the district's commitment to safety, equity, and achievement. Stephanie Ochaki, our student support coordinator, will now provide additional details regarding the review committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Violetta. Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. Our review committee is co-chaired by Janelle Hengel, Assistant Administrator at Eastview High School, Jill Coyle, General Counsel, who was here before you this evening, Violetta Hernandez Espinoza, Coordinator of Equity and Inclusion, and myself. The review committee consists of administrators, teachers, support staff, parents, and student representatives. We are grateful to everyone involved for their time and dedication to the process. While the planning for this work began in late spring of twenty twenty-one, the committee's initial monthly meeting took place in December. Since then, our commu-, committee, excuse me, has familiarized itself with the five oh three point three AR regulation, reviewed district data related to suspensions and other behavior referrals, and is currently conducting individual and group interviews with stakeholders in our district who are involved and impacted by our discipline practices. This is all in an effort to elevate these voices as our committee considers our charge. As we continue to guide the five oh three point three AR Review Committee through our collaborative process, our intent is to regularly update and reflect on our mission, excuse me, reflect on our mission regarding establishing policies, regulations, and procedures that are rooted in equity and social, emotional well-being. If the committee determines there is a recommended change needed to the five oh three point three AR regulation and related procedures, a draft will be provided to the superintendent's cabinet by January of twenty twenty-three and will be shared with the board in the spring of twenty twenty-three as part of the annual review process. We thank you very much for your support in this exploration of our students, of our district's, excuse me, discipline practices. Thank you.
Item this evening, so it's just up for discussion. It will be an action item at our next board meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none? Questions and comments from board members? Joel?
I just wanted to thank the committee for doing this or for being formed and for working on this. I know this is something that, you know, we have been working on evolving our discipline practices and policies for decades, at least since I've been on the board and I'm sure before that. But a lot of changes have been needed, and a lot of changes have, or a lot of our practices have come into question in the past few years. And so I think it's nice that, not more than nice, I think it's great that we have started this committee and we're looking at this issue so that we can do a deep dive and not just a once-a-year glance at the book saying, well, how can we change this? Let's, let's really look at this, find out what is the best for our students and for our schools, and, you know, not just to punish, but to see, you know, kind of find out why behaviors are the way they are and how we can help students and, you know, help our schools as a result. So I think this is a great step forward. I'm looking forward to the report next year. And if anything comes up in the interim before a year from now, you know, feel free to give us updates. That'd be great.
Exactly. Thank you. Sutchen?
I just want to piggyback on what Joel said. It's just wonderful to see the diverse perspectives that are being engaged in here as well, from a social and emotional standpoint, voices of marginalized communities, as well as student voices as well. Having been, several of us are on many committees, and it is not only impactful but incredibly authentic to have student voices present on, on the table. So I commend that view to that outreach as well. So thank you for this great work and having this really well-rounded approach to not just, you know, finding ways to punish, because that really doesn't solve the thing, but really mediate the catalyst of these things. So wonderful. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. This is available online. If you want to, if you don't have it at home, it is mailed in the fall to every household or every student households. And, but it is available online if you'd like to research it and look at it further. Any other questions or comments, Joel?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll see you May ninth. Next, we have other action items. The first other action item this evening is the Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act Resolution. Tony Taxner is going to walk us through that.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. I'm here tonight to raise awareness of the continuing problem of the underfunding of special education services by the state and federal governments, and to ask for your approval of a resolution in support of legislation introduced in Congress that would fully fund the federal government's responsibility for the Individuals with Disabilities Act, or IDEA as it is known. IDEA was enacted in nineteen seventy-five to help ensure that all students with disabilities have access to a free, appropriate public education. This was truly historic legislation that has improved the lives of countless children in the forty-seven years that the law has been in existence. When it was enacted, Congress committed to fund up to forty percent of the additional cost of providing these mandated special education services. However, Congress has never fully funded forty percent and currently funds less than fourteen percent of the additional cost. As a result, school districts must use general education funding to fill this gap in special education funding known as the cross subsidy. In fiscal year twenty twenty, as referenced in the resolution, the special education cross subsidy totaled nearly seven hundred million dollars for all Minnesota school districts combined, and was nearly twenty-eight million dollars in District One ninety-six alone that year. So twenty-six, twenty-eight million dollars of funding from the general, from general education funding was used to fill that gap. Twenty-eight million dollars. If we had the twenty-eight million dollars or anywhere near that, we would not be, you know, in the situation that school districts are in. So last November, the Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act was reintroduced in the Senate and House of Representatives. The legislation could still be considered, but needs additional support in Congress to move it forward. Our Representative Angie Craig and Senators Clovishaw and Smith all support the legislation. Eliminating the special education cross subsidy, as you well know, is also part of our district's state legislative priorities every year. The state mandates special education services above and beyond what is required under IDEA, and thus shares in the requirement to fully fund special education services. The spring issue of our Spotlight Newsletter was mailed to all households in the district earlier this month. It includes a two-page spread that has our priorities, has our priorities on one page, and on the other page, we have contact information for the fourteen legislators who represent portions of District One ninety-six. And we encourage residents to reach out to their legislators, let them know what they think about our priorities and anything else that's important to them. We know how important it is for legislators to hear from their constituents. At this point, I'd like to play a two-minute video that does an even better job of explaining what I tried to just tell you. The video was made by the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, which we are a member of, and it runs, like I said- a member of, and it runs, like I said, just a little under two minutes. So, Cliff, if you'd play that, that'd be great. At this point, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have and ask you to approve the resolution in support of Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act. I would say if you approve, we will send this, your notice of your approval, on to our congressional representatives and to the Minnesota School Boards Association, which is encouraging school districts, school boards to approve the resolution and to advocate for this. And just lastly, I'll say that special education, the special education cross subsidy is something that most Minnesotans, I think, have come to understand. We've been talking about it a lot. There's a $9 billion surplus that they're talking about at the state, and if we're ever going to do anything with that, I've heard people say, you know, now's the time to put a plan in place to take care of that. So, we're hopeful about that. We would encourage anyone so inclined to contact their legislator. And, you know, again, this, if we were getting that funding, we would not be coming for levy referendums to the extent that we have to, and it would solve a lot of problems.
Other questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions and comments from board members? Art?
Just point out, you know, thanks, Tony, it was a great presentation. This is an annual gap that we have to fill. This is not $700 million and we're done. This is each year. This is an ongoing obligation of the state and federal government that they're not meeting. So, I mean, figuring out with this $9 billion, that's great, but we still need to figure out how we're going to pay for it and further, you know, looking further out. So, I just would encourage our representatives, both at the state and federal level, to fully fund the commitments they've made and the obligations they've obliged us to. I mean, they have these mandates in place for us that we have to spend the money on, and then they don't pay for it. So, that's just something that I would just encourage them to take a hard look at.
Exactly. Sachin.
Tony, as always, thank you for, you know, showing a spotlight on this very important issue over here. I absolutely fully support the resolution. One quick question maybe for the listeners as well. The resolution urges Congress congressional action. The video talked a lot about the state level. How do you bridge the gap? Could we do something within this resolution to also include state-level action? Because there's a little disconnect between how this reads and how the video talks about it in terms of opportunity, but there is a little disconnect there.
Yeah, they both have, both the state and federal government have shared responsibility.
Correct.
And when I called Scott Krunkwitz, the Executive Director of AMSD, to let him know that we were going to put this forward and to ask his advice, you know, this is, this, again, the resolution is directed toward the federal government. What AMSD and what we spend our time, most of our time on, is advocating at the state level. That's where we can have more of an impact. We're certainly supportive of this. If the federal government were providing a greater share, that would mean the state would have to fill in a smaller share. But combined between the two of them, they're mandating the services. We need the funds to provide those services. So, yes, I agree. And he pointed that out, and I said, "Well, I think this is an opportunity." Yes, we'll ask for approval of the resolution, but we will use it as an opportunity to talk about the state's responsibility as well.
Thank you.
Joel?
Just to address your question too, Sachin, because I'm involved with the State School Board Association. This resolution was originally drafted by the Minnesota School Boards Association. And the reason, I mean, this has been a high priority for them for decades as well. But the reason that this is coming forward this year and they're asking school districts across the state to adopt this resolution this year is because this is the first time in decades where we actually have, the bill has been introduced in both the U.S. House and U.S. Senate, and there's support, bipartisan support for this in Washington. And so this is kind of like our best chance in many, many years. So, right now, this resolution is focused on the U.S. Congress. But yes, we still do have the issue at the state level, and we will continue to press it at a state level, our Legislative Advisory Council, and, you know, obviously, our citizens can press it as well. But that's the reason behind the language in this particular resolution, because it's kind of like our last best chance to get this, because it does have bipartisan support in Washington and at the state level, too. So, it's not just a one-party issue. It's just a matter of finding the money to do it and, you know, the willpower to get this passed. So, that's why it's a federal resolution, but it does not diminish any of our efforts on the state level. Hope I covered that.
Good job. Any other questions or comments? The thing about this, it doesn't just impact special education students. So, you might be sitting there thinking, "This only affects special education students." It doesn't. This also takes money out of where more teachers, all the other things that the school district supplies. And I've been on the board for 33 years, I think, coming up in June, and this has been an issue for 33 years. The Congress guaranteed on their half, when they passed this bill, that they would pay 40%, and they have certain rules that we have to follow. Then the state has higher rules that we have to follow, and, but nobody's ever decided that they should pay what they said they were going to pay. So, to me, it's quite an issue that should be done, and we should be done with this issue. And it would really help all of our schools across the country if at least the federal government would move up to 40%. I think the highest they've ever done is like 18%, and they're at 14% now. So, let's hope that we get some bipartisan support and something actually moves out in Washington.
And any funding to special education benefits every district, because every district has a cross subsidy.
Every district and every student in the country.
And of course, I have to just throw in, it's a matter of funding, but it's not a matter of whether or not we're providing the services. And so I just always want to make sure that's very clear, that we are really proud of the services we provide for our kids with disabilities and want to continue to grow and improve their outcomes as well.
Exactly. Exactly. And it would give us a better opportunity to do that.
Exactly.
So, with that, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask, forgot to ask for a motion in a second. Ask for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Cory, a second by Joel. All in favor of the Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act Resolution indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. That passes on a 7-0 vote. Next, we'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger with District 196 Volunteer Appreciation Week, April 18 through the 22nd.
Okay. District 196 will celebrate Public School Volunteer Appreciation Week, April 18 through April 22nd. The district recognizes all the volunteers who support our teachers and students every day. I ask that you approve the resolution.
Any questions or comments other than saying yay rough for all of our volunteers? I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion by Bianca, a second by Joel. All in favor of volunteers indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a unanimous vote. Next is Teacher Appreciation Week, May 2nd through the 6th.
More than 2,600 teachers work in District 196 to educate our students to reach their full potential. Tonight, I ask your approval of the resolution declaring District 196 Teacher Appreciation Week, May 2nd through May 6th. And I do see a few teachers in the audience now, so we'll do a quick applause.
Woo-hoo! With that, we'll take a motion in a second.
Move approval?
Second.
A motion by Joel and a second by Bianca. Any questions or comments other than saying thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to our teachers?
Thank you.
And thank you. With that, we have a motion in a second to approve District 196 Teacher Appreciation Week, that is, May 2nd through the 6th. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That passes on a 7-0 vote. Next is our District 196 Nurse Appreciation Week, May 2nd through the 6th.
More than 50 school nurses promote health and safety in playing an essential role in ensuring students are healthy and ready to learn. And in these last few years, we've certainly learned how fortunate we are to have our school nurses in 196. So, tonight, I ask your approval of the resolution declaring District 196 Teachers Appreciation Week, May 2nd through May 6th.
With that, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion by Bianca, a second by Cory. Questions or comments or celebratory congratulations for our nurses that got us through the past couple of years.
All in favor of the Nurses Appreciation Week, May 2nd through the 6th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Congratulations. That passes on a unanimous vote, and we do appreciate all of our teachers, our nurses, and of course, our volunteers. With that, we've come to the end of our agenda. We're into the agenda part with board members and superintendent updates. Board members with items they'd like to share tonight. Seeing none, we'll turn it to the superintendent.
Okay. I have a few things to end with. First, I want to encourage everyone to take in a high school theater performance this month. All four of our comprehensive high schools have theater productions the last two weeks in April. Egan and Eastview High Schools are having their annual variety shows, Encore and Bravo, starting next week for a two-week run. Apple Valley High School is performing Sense and Sensibility, April 21st through the 24th. And Rosemont High School is performing the musical Nice Work If You Can Get It, April 28 through the 30th, and closing Sunday, May 1st. See the high school websites for information about times and to purchase tickets. And if you have not had an opportunity to go to one of our high school productions, I can guarantee you, you will be amazed that it's a high school production. I also want to invite parents, guardians, and other residents interested in serving the district to consider applying for an opening on one of our district's citizen and staff advisory councils. Five of our nine advisory councils are currently accepting applications for terms that begin in July. These include the Budget Advisory Council, the Community Education Advisory Council, the Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Council, the Gifted and Talented Advisory Council, and the Legislative Advisory Council. For more information, go to the district website at district196.org. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy return to spring. Hopefully, it sticks with us a minute, and a productive last eight weeks of the school year. As we could see at the start of tonight's meeting, our amazing students are continuing to achieve at very high levels. Our district's whole-child AAA approach provides students with boundless opportunities to pursue their infinite possibilities in academics, the arts, and athletics. We encourage everyone to get involved and find your possibilities. Thank you.
Here, here. With that, come to the end of the agenda this evening. I'll ask for a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Cory, a second by Secoudin. All in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Our next meeting will be Monday, May 9.